To hold some of the public workshops. But what I wanted to do tonight was is to go over the highlights of the report shared last week. If you haven't had a chance to read it, should be caught up by the end of tonight's discussion. And then the intent is to get your feedback, insights and direction on developing the strategic plan. Particularly we would focus on what initiatives do we want to include on a five year plan to go off and tackle. So we'll, we'll get into the discussion here in a little bit. So we'll talk about kind of the general problem with the methodology that was used for the research, discuss the findings and have a discussion discussion on some of the recommendations and issues. So the issues with the current comprehensive plan, which we have, it was written in 1997. There's a 20 year vision statement or planning statement that is would have expired in 2017. A lot of it is still good, the observations that were made and that are still relevant. However, it, the question we have is, does it primarily reflect the priorities and aspirations problems proceed by our residents? And given that it's over 20 years old, I think an answer would be a no. And then when we're looking at, does it inform near term decisions to achieve planning goals? At this point, it's, I don't believe it does. So that's the problem that we're faced with. And then so what we did, if you recall from our initial kickoff workshop and discussions to this point, was to develop a community based strategic plan that addresses these, these issues. If you recall from our discussion previously, the community based strategic plan will collect the best, collects the best ideas and most constructive feedback from residents, articulates their expectations for local government, provides a blueprint for community goals and serves as a basis for budgetary consideration. So that's, and that's our goal. That's what we want the strategic plan to encompass and provide. And some of the benefits that we've noted earlier, the strategic plan aligns programs with citizen expectations. So when we're looking at strategic initiatives, we want to make sure that we're coming up with initiatives that reflect those expectations that were voiced during the surveys and public workshops. And they also use those results to identify and eliminate waste. Are there things we're spending money on that may not be necessarily desired by the community? And identify areas to transition those resources to other uses. Also provides a political empowerment to say no to shiny objects. So, or, or the follow on from that is in a planning or land use decision with developers, does the project reflect the desires of the citizens as they voiced them in the strategic plan? So making sure that we're, we're aligned with those priorities and statements. And which will allow us to stay out of the weeds and focus on the higher order of initiatives and projects and issues that we'll focus on in the next 20 years. And the goal for this is again, to not only inform this current city council, but future city councils that they can use this, build off it. And if there's new things that we can assess those. So kind of rehashing the same points. Rationale was develop a strategic plan, reflects those preferences, informs budgetary decisions and achieves strategic priorities. To do that, we focus on a research question. What are the most important community priorities and initiatives for the city? And building off of that, the supporting research questions that were analyzed included, what are residents saying? What is noticeable? What's occurring that they like and do not like? Where are the primary deficiencies? And what are the perceived strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats that residents view? The project plan, if you recall, started in January with launching the strategic plan. And now in May, I'm presenting the results after phase two and phase three of data gathering and analysis. Going forward, in June, July, August and September, we'll develop the strategic planning document, start putting together a future year spend plan that will inform the FY 21 budget. And by September, have a strategic plan, future year spend plan and a budget document endorsed, approved and informing the future actions of the city. During the launch phase, we came up with the branding and outreach strategy. We used Envision Martindale. We hosted a civic day event. We published number of flyers, went door to door, put it in mailers and tried to boost the amount of engagement and participation amongst our community as much as possible. We gathered data through surveys and public workshops. Our response rate would did not meet our goal. My goal was to at least get the number of responses equal to the voter participation, number of voters in the last general municipal election. And then achieved that, achieved about half of that. Um, the representative of about, I think it's 50 some odd respondents through surveys or public workshops. And we had over a hundred voters in last municipal election. So the response rate for this, even though voter registration was not required to participate, just using for comparison purposes. So even though the numbers were small, I think it's still valid sample size to develop conclusions on the way forward and knowing that our initiatives are grounded within the views of the community. The survey questions, if I'm not sure if anybody had a chance to respond to the surveys. Well, the survey questions include, what do you like most about Martindale? This was intended to identify the prevalent positive attitudes of the city and potential strengths. We asked, where would you like the city government to focus future efforts? And this could identify, motivate responses directed at change, negative attitudes and potential weaknesses. Why did you move to Martindale? Or why would you make you move from Martindale? Or a different way to asking the same sort of question, what are those positive attitudes that you have? What are those negative attitudes that you have? What, what's your motivations for living here or possibly not living here? The fifth question included, what, if you were in charge, what would you change about Martindale? This provides a king or queen for a day scenario, which is intend to motivate responses, respondents to share where they desire to see change. And then the last set of questions address those perceptions of opportunities and threats. And then with the last question, what comments or insights would you like to share? This allowed respondents to either double tap, show enthusiasm for a particular issue that they might have addressed in previous survey questions or also provide other responses. In the public workshops, um, in the public workshops, we, we split up groups between four to six people, had brainstorming, brainstormed ideas based off structured workshop questions that were lifted from the survey, presented a king or queen for a day scenario and allowed the, the group to discuss those ideas and have my feedback. Then once we did that, we arranged ideas by theme and kind of discussed the results to get more context in some of the responses that may have been seen in the brainstorming stage. So here, here's the, how the analysis works. So I took the survey and workshop responses, tried distilled those into themes and observations. And those themes and observations were category categorized and grouped to identify the strategic priorities. The strategic priorities were then analyzed against the supporting research questions that are discussed above, the, what are people saying, where's the weaknesses and deficiencies? And then from that flow back out to strategic initiatives. So really what it did was take the responses from the workshops, drill it down to concrete, concrete areas of focus and then expanded upon on that of where do we want to see our strategic initiatives in our strategic plan. So the results, the strategic priorities that were identified during, through the analysis were maintain community, economic development and planning, management, public services, infrastructure and public amenities. These are the broad categories of where the data focused on for our strategic plan. And we'll get into each of these here. And now this is kind of an opportunity to, to have discussion on insights, whether you agree, disagree, have questions and have a little more as we get into the meat of this.
Hey Jared, that, that, this wasn't in any kind of priority order, was it? Based on the, the number of?
No. So that's one of the things, this, this was not in a priority order, but this was in order of salience. So what were those things that were most frequently mentioned? Maintaining community was mentioned as much as economic analysis, uh, development and planning and infrastructure and public amenities. There is a, a significant focus on roads, parks and the library. But other than, which was a data focus, but maintaining community was actually a large, more frequently reflective of the responses in the workshops and surveys. Not that much, but that's, that order there is, is notional. It can, when we write our strategic plan, we can put that order in whatever we see fit.
Okay, that's interesting. You know, based off of all our, our complaints that we tracked last year, in the first three months we were, we were here looking at those, roads were, you know, outweighed everything by a bunch. So this says that maybe it's not so much.
So I have a question, Jared. What is your word maintain community define as? What does that really mean?
So that is the theme of, I responded. So it relates to having a sense of community, how people feel in a place to live, their identity that they hold within Martindale, what's their identity associated with the city? Um, how, what's the, how's their way of life? Those sort of things that those quality of life experiences that residents have when they're living in a city. And I would caution, I wouldn't necessarily say that. Okay, go ahead Lisa.
I was gonna chime in.
Yeah.
Um, with some of the comments that I was reading, it sounded like, you know, it was more, they liked everything being neighborly, uh, being able to, uh, you know, go to your neighbor for, you know, a cup of flour or whatever. That kind of thing, that, that kind of community. I would like to see, see more increased community.
Yeah. So that, that was definitely a major theme within the maintain community was that neighborly atmosphere, knowing your neighbor, talk with them, sharing common interests. Um, and then the public events and volunteerism were identified as areas of building those bonds within the community for sure.
I would just like to also add that, um, this is Sonia, that I think also what I could take away from that is that the people that she spoke with don't want like big box, you know, concrete everywhere, that type of feel. I think like the markets, the, you know, farmers markets, the markets we have in town, downtown, you know, kind of keeping it mom and pop is what makes it special.
I agree.
Right. Exactly. It's, that was, that was a segue, maintain community and economic development. And probably those things are very much almost viewed on a balance or continuum. They don't want economic development to outweigh maintaining the community. They want, if there's development, have it retain the character of the town.
Keep it outside of the city limits.
Not necessarily that. It's, it's that if it's within the city limits, reflect those attitudes of the residents of the community. So, you know, and reflect those priorities. And we'll get to the, the economic development stuff here in Monday. But you're completely right. The, the maintain community was a strong appreciation for the sense of community that residents feel with each other, desire to maintain that small town feel, clean atmosphere. They don't mind having employment and entertainment options outside of the city. Enjoy Martindale because it's, it's an oasis from that hustle and bustle. But close enough to it that they can get to it and get those amenities. It's not presently within their community. Um, also the serenity and the, the identity and agricultural natural environment, the river was very much evident. It, part of that sense of community likely comes from, you know, for many residents, this is a generational, for many generations within the family live here or that there's multi generations within their family currently living. And as, as you alluded to January, that, that concern of potential loss due to a large influx of residents or developments, those big box stores. And those interactions, events and volunteering are those social resources that help knit the community together and create those, those social bonds. So when we're looking at initiatives, I would, I would think of, okay, where are those ways that we can build upon those strengths as in, in terms of strategic planning? And, and, and what are those initiatives that the city might do? You know, volunteering and events that would maintain or, or even build upon those strengths. And they go continually, they like knowing their neighbors, the slow paced, quiet neighborhoods, an overall rural character. Large businesses, commercial centers located away. One of the things that, um, the city council recently that was a resolution, that was something that came up in survey responses was people enjoy the night sky and want to maintain that minimal light. So when we're looking at initiatives, maybe going from a resolution to ordinance might be something that we would look at. People enjoy feeling involved in the city, life in the city. And it's not cookie cutter, you know, it's not large scale housing developments where, you know, 500 of the same house in different variations and muted browns and greens and grays. Same roof lines. They like that it feels untouched and retains the history of the farming community. What they don't like is the appearances of city entrances, the, the mount, the existence and the amount of dilapidated buildings, that kind of property. That was a major theme in the workshops of, you know, they want to see the city take action against those property owners to correct those, those nuisance conditions within the city. Be more aggressive in enforcing those ordinances. And then they were concerned about the increase in short term rent rentals and how that might degrade the, the atmosphere within the community. So if we're trying to address something there, the sort of levers we could have, could use are, you know, quota system, zoning regulation, those items. Or if it's not, if it's not something that we want to include in our strategic plan, that's fine. But also something we could be aware of when, you know, that, that this is a concern in the community. The deficiencies, people consider that the city government would take a passive approach to economic development, which would impact the character of the town. You know, basically selling out. They didn't want the city government to sell out to a large developer for the sole purpose of, hey, anything is a good thing. They wanted the city government to, to be active in finding those that, those opportunities that would match the attitudes of the residency, residents. Without this being overall discouraging, they just, they didn't want something to come in and change to fill the town.
The last bullet directly comes back to the economic development.
Yeah. So we'll get into that a little bit on the economic development, but you're right. There, there's, there's a natural contradiction or there's, there's a contradiction in the responses and viewpoints. But that kind of shows, you know, I don't want a lot of development. I don't want none. I want some, but I want the some that I like, not the, not the anything. So it's, it's definitely a comedy there where you'd have to find a, a balance. And I think some of the identity, the information that's in the economic development portion kind of hits to this where they want mom and pop stores and they want locally owned and managed businesses. They don't want a strip of box stores and, you know, strip malls, you know, B lobbies and the rest of it.
I think also that during all of the questionnaires and everything, we were having that smart terminal, uh, negotiations. And I think a lot of people were kind of, you know, they weren't sure what was going on. And I think that it caused, you know, some concern there.
Yeah. I think there, there's probably a skewing, there's probably definitely a skewing of, of those people who felt strongly on those subjects likely participated in the survey in more, greater proportion than those who may not have had a stronger feeling. That the smart terminal was brought up, Cherryville was brought up. Um, the recent potential, uh, park, the, the camping park, RV park was, was moved. There were a number of, of things that people are concerned about when it comes to those things. So I think that overall, the areas where the community views and perceptions are, there's a, there's a strength in the pride of the agricultural, of the city that can be used as, you know, a way to maintain the look and feel. When we're looking at developments or incentives or initiatives, it's prioritizing that, that agricultural history as a strength. Um, the weaknesses within the sense of communities, those, those substandard and unkept conditions of properties. Opportunities to take advantage of this, there's a strong tradition of volunteerism within the, within Martindale and that came through on the survey responses. And those threats, as we mentioned, were the encroaching growth of the smart terminal, Cherryville. Those things creating more traffic, more congestion on Highway 80, more demands on that structure and the light growth that, if those developments are successful in the next, you know, in the future, well, not in the next five years, but in the future, how that would impact the agricultural natural environment that people enjoy within this city and within this town. So when we're looking at initiatives, some of the ones that, that were stood out to me, these were either proposed and the responses themselves were something that came, came out of that information that we just reviewed. Um, these are the things that we, I think we should consider, city councils should consider in the strategic plan. Those items are enforcing city codes regarding animal control, public influences, substantive buildings, property conditions. Really going out and making a concerted effort to address those through the existing ordinances that we have. I don't think we need to make changes to our ordinances. I think they're sufficient. The next one was improve perception and differentiation of the city by placing signs along city entrances. So this would kind of, this would help identify Martindale as a place. Um, and not something that, that's kind of loose inside of a number of cities do this. Um, I think right now the, the city entrances, it's really talking about, you know, how the Pack and Sack, Lockhart Street on Highway 80 and 142, that intersection and how that's often in disrepair and there's gravel, holes, mud. And then, um, up the town, you, you just kind of, you're just all of a sudden in the city without any, you know, welcome or entrance. And so maintaining those, basically the beautification of those areas is what they're looking for. And I think maybe times aren't, aren't the solution, but it's definitely something that we could consider as part of a strategic initiative to identify Martindale. And adopting ordinances to prevent light pollution, building upon the existing resolution. Um, for volunteerism to address some of these difficult challenges. So like city beautification, we already have a citywide cleanup day where we have whole, um, trash disposal. But would, could we leverage our community volunteers to beautify substandard lots for some property? Maybe they don't have the means, but you know, fresh on a pay, might not be that expensive, but can make a big difference. So what are, are ways that we can encourage volunteerism in these areas? Voting city events and, and celebrate the city's history and diversity. Uh, diversity became a, a key feature in the survey response and the workshops. You know, making sure that the minority populations, um, you know, who might have had ancestral slaves in, in the town or in the region or, um, members of the Hispanic community, that those, that their diversity and background and history are equally recognized and celebrated through city events. And the last one, you know, promote home rehabilitation programs. And that maybe not through the city, but providing information resources that's available for USDA for hopefully remodeling, um, HUD or other federal programs or state programs that might make sense. So a kind of pump is there to capture any feedback there is on this, this maintain community? If there's any other initiatives or insights that you would like to share? I'd love to, love to hear those.
Are you talking about ideas?
Yeah. Or is there anything that, that of, of this list that really strikes a chord with you? That, that you really agree with or something that you don't agree with? Or is there something that you'd like to see added as a potential strategic initiative in this?
Well, I definitely, I definitely think the animal control we've, uh, has greatly improved uh, since the, the mauling. A lot more people are really abiding by that. Um, now we've talked about signage quite a bit, maybe we need to start doing some action.
I agree.
On that, or, uh, you know, at least on Highway 80 regarding the city.
You know, we've talked, we've talked before about the, the signage that you're talking about and, and even that we have designated a historic district, having signs on 80 like you're talking about and, you know, pointing to the historic district like you see in all kinds of other cities. and, you know, pointing to the historic district like you see in all kinds of other cities. The notion of revitalizing our downtown, that's going to be the first step to getting foot traffic down there in order for any of the businesses to truly succeed, in my opinion.
Right. Um, you know, I think, uh, uh, some of the initiatives, you know, coming from a lot of the committees, say the, the parks and the library, they were in a historical you know, we might be able to get more participation with the help of those committees too. You know, the park coming up with some kind of initiatives. Uh, I like the fact that they have Volunteer Day every once a month and that kind of thing. Um, um, you know, I'd like to hear some ideas about, um, maybe signage or something from the, the historical committee, uh, possible improvements that the city can do. Um, you know, maybe even changing the entrance to Steve Hall, something like that, something, like you said, something simple and, and, um, you know, and, and easy, but noticeable, uh, you know, um.
Another, another thing that, I'm sorry, Jan, go ahead. I'll go after you.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking right now, just brainstorming.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, trying to maybe get some little community, like your civic day. You know, maybe we should have a civic day every year, uh, something like that that the city puts on. I was reading in, in a paper, Jared, about budget-based strategic planning. And it wasn't, I had a question about that, but I was thinking that we can put something in the budget that would create some kind of community, um, uh, participation and, you know, or at least incentive to come out.
Yeah, dedicating resources to that, to that area.
Right.
Developing, you know, maintain community. How, I, we perhaps, once we identify these initiatives, then we want to proceed with, we'll want to identify, what, what are we going to, how are we going to measure success in those areas? How are we going to measure success in maintaining community? One of the coolest things are, have you adopted a, an ordinance preventing light pollution? That's, that's a pretty easy one. Do you, um, measure substandard buildings or measure progress on rehab, you know, rehabilitation programs? Now, we could take percentage of homes that have been remediated, or properties that have been remediated. We could look at percentage of homes that do this, and then, then when we're looking at events, you know, we can look at attendance or number of events. We want to make sure we craft those measures in a way that achieves the outcomes that we hope to get.
Right, you don't want to do too many, you know.
Yeah. I mean, I could throw a lot out there. Maybe we want, we maybe just want to do, you know, this is a five-year planning horizon. Tackle, you know, one a year, maybe come up with five each or, or something.
Right. You know, you mentioned, um, you asked, or you made a statement about, you know, any of these items, items that strike chords with us or things that we hear from residents. And, and the notion of houses that are vacant and/or run down to the point of disrepair, um, roofs caving in, windows broken, that sort of thing. To me, you know, that, that is, that is something that can be addressed and should be addressed. Um, uh, let's see, without it having to be an initiative per se. Um, you know, I am thinking about the building across the street from City Hall. It was certainly a very long process, but the, the, the realization that we do have the ability to at least initially write letters to the property owners in informing them what demolition by neglect really means, and that if you own property, you do have some responsibilities. I feel like it doesn't need to be a, a city, a citywide collaborative initiative. I feel like that is something that we have, I don't know, maybe shied away from or, or sort of don't want to step on toes, which I respect and appreciate. But at the end of the day, those, that's what I'm hearing in the results of, of these, of these surveys is that people don't like that and it's a big distraction. And I feel like, you know, being in-house, I know that, um, our city attorney Kent Markham can, you know, certainly give his feedback or, or chime in on that, what it, what the process looks like and what it takes. Um, so often when property owners know, you know, sometimes, sometimes people don't live here and they, you know, they own property that was inherited by their parents or their grandparents. They don't have any idea what kind of disrepair it's in. So I feel like that's something, you know, I mean, gui- gui- guide us as far as how that needs to be done. But, um, I think that's, I think that would go a really long way.
Yeah, maybe we need to look at, look at some of our building code ordinances.
I think they're, I think they're fine, just, I mean, you know, there, there's a process through the, uh, there, there's a process through the, uh, to the, to the municipal court. And there's a process through the district court. This is a matter of identifying what those properties are. And then taking action, um, and it just depends on the degree of severity to which the city decides to make an adjustment or something. Take Renton, instance, a property that is adjacent to City Hall. It was in very bad disrepair and began to break and shit, and that was evidenced through the engineer's report that the city had filed. Um, not all, not all cases are going to be that strict, but I can tell you, I think the city's sort of willing to, in conjunction with the local government code, which, which set up, ended up dealing with this, are in fine condition. We decided we want to take action.
And so based on what you just said, Kent, based on what you just said, um, having identified those properties. So for example, if myself or any of the other council members were to submit a list and say, here's all the properties that look like, you know, literally no one is living there, they are falling apart. Um, I mean, it's one thing to live in a house and you've got disrepair, that you're just trying to figure it out and trying to work on it. It's another thing when no one is present. And so if we were to provide a list, is that something that, and of course, obviously this would require, uh, a council approval, I'm assuming, but, you know, that just an initial letter could be started in basically a file created on these properties so that we could monitor it going forward? Would, would, would just a list to you work to start it off?
You got to identify the properties. It's either council approval, or if, if, uh, if the mayor wants to pass one, that's fine. But the, the law provides for cover of several penalties. Um, in, in, in the event that these dangerous property buildings are allowed to exist. And so what you need to do is you need to point out to the property owners the problem that exists, give them an opportunity to cure the problem, and if they don't, let them know the penalties they face. One, several penalties. The other is, in this case, there's potential recovery attorney fees if they feel a dangerous condition of three. Um, the city can also secure authority to demolish, uh, destruction, if in fact it is, uh, shown to be a dangerous and likely to affect. So, yeah, give, give them that opportunity to fix it, and if they don't look in a reasonable period of time, then the city can pursue action if necessary.
What do you consider a reasonable amount of time?
Well, it depends. I, I don't, I don't like to set a borderline. If someone, if someone is communicating and making an effort, I think there's always more grace and leeway.
Agreed.
If someone is accused to communicate and there's no ability to communicate, then you're looking a little faster than you would if someone's making an effort. Um, the, the absolute bare minimum for doing something is thirty days, which I think would be a worst speed of a situation like this.
Oh, agreed.
Zero angst, um, and that, that was years in the making.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, like size.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we have to be careful about this because, um,
Yeah.
it, it, y'all have made it sound very simple, but it, it's much more complicated than than, uh, just looking at it and saying, hey, I don't like the way that looks, and let's go find a reason to go force them to tear it down or fix it or something. It is what I think.
I don't ever want to give that impression, but, but what I think is very important, if someone has allowed their property to fall in disrepair, they need to know a bunch of full spectrum of potential things that they're facing. It's not saying the city is going to do it, but it's just simply identifying the problem and saying, communicate with the city to fix it. And if you don't, here are the things that could happen.
Right. And I, and I, I was gonna say, I think that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. I think that, I think that the focus that I'm at least hearing from residents, as well as my own personal observation, are really more on the houses that are vacant, where no one is living there, as in probably they received FEMA money as a buyout. They, instead of using the money to repair the home, they took the money and they left and moved somewhere else. Um, could be, that's just a, that's just an example. That may not even be totally valid, but that's just kind of in my mind. So, um, that's, I think, I think that is an area where I fe- I feel like there's more than we realize that are, that are out there in that kind of situation where no one lives in the dwelling.
I agree. I thought there was a list of properties from the flood and that people weren't allowed to, to live in them because they were so bad.
Yeah, but then do you just leave it there to just fall apart?
I thought we had a list of those properties. Did we?
We've developed a list of properties that would be eligible for this next round of FEMA buyouts. Um, and we went around and cataloged those properties that, that would likely, in that, that situation, that circumstance, um, try to reach out to them, to the owners of those, of that property and encourage them to take advantage of this opportunity. I would say the initial results of that are all that important.
That is on the plate, you know. So we are doing something.
Oh, yeah, we're doing, we're doing things to try to go do it, but we're taking small baby steps and we don't have a, we don't really have a, a good plan on how we go address it. What I was going to leave off too well ago was that in, in our community, we've got an awful lot of grandfathered, um, historically used, uh, homes, buildings, et cetera, that are, you know, you put one right side by side with one of these houses that was flooded, the Gonzalez house that's about to fall down. We all know that the Gonzalez house was over Harley Lane, was damaged by the flood and about to fall down, and we need to do something done with it. But there's others in town that people recently have actually were living in that don't look a whole lot different from them. And, you know, they don't have walls necessarily falling down, but they're leaning some and, uh, they, they come from old agricultural, you know, some farmer or some rancher had, had, had folks that lived there and, and, you know, as recently as, as within the last few years. And those trees laying on top of the house, the roofs and, and, you know, that doesn't mean people weren't living there and then using them, so.
Well, I agree, I agree with that, but I think that's a good point to start.
Have, we've got to go have, um, a, if we're going to eat this elephant, we got to go figure out what we're going to start at the tail, or we're going to start at the trunk, or we're going to start at the front right leg. We got to go take a bite by bite and, and get done that yet. Although this activity that we're doing tonight is a step forward, and I agree with that a hundred percent, but, uh,
I would, I would, I would request that we do.
Say we're going to start sending out letters to everybody and create a, create all kinds of extra, uh,
Yeah, I think that's the same.
trouble for, for, for the staff that we end up macking off of either. I want to go into this, if we're going to go start telling folks they got a thing up, and I want to make sure we, we can make it stick, so.
And see, what I would just like to add, um, uh, okay, can, I don't know if y'all can see me.
Yeah, I can hear.
Can y'all see me though?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so what I, what I wanted to say is, I, I think like, I like to sign ideas. Like I was looking at something like this, or they have like the entryway signs. I mean, you know, those are about a thousand, two thousand, but like if we could, you know, come up with their sign and put it on our city property. Um, another thing that I wanted to say is just that, you know, I, I, I hear it, and I mean, I've been on council long enough to ha- have heard this in different things, but it's like, oh, it's an ordinance, but we don't enforce that ordinance. We can't be, we cannot be a community that picks and chooses which ordinances to follow and whatnot.
Here, here.
So if our, we, we really need to set the precedence, and if we're trying to move forward and break chains, you know, or break the barriers that, that from the past, is like, in order to set the precedence for the future, is like, we need to start following our ordinances. If we don't want to follow our ordinances, then we need to change them to where they're going to be more lenient or modify them or do whatever we need to do, um, just to start following them. That way citizens can be compliant.
I, I completely agree with that, Sonia, and, and then I also want to say something about, um, what the mayor said, as far as if we're going to, if we're going to start eating this elephant, do we start at the head or the tail? Um, it would be my request and, and, and hopes that on a, a future agenda item would be that we would make a decision about sending an initial letter, not the kind that smacks anybody or throws out any fines, but more on an informative and education, uh, standpoint. And we can decide as a council if we want it to be, you know, we, we can determine what we did, what, what is truly in disrepair or would be demolition by neglect, the owners neglecting their property to the point that they're falling down.
And see, um, uh, before we do letters or do anything, I would like just to look at the ordinance. Let's look at the ordinance. Let's dissect the ordinance. Let's, you know.
That would be what we would do. That would be all together. And then the other part that I was going to say, based on, um, what you said, uh, Sonia, in regards to, if we're going to have an ordinance, if we're going to have something on the books, we need to have the, the backbone to enforce it. And so I also agree with what the mayor said in regards to, we have to kind of be careful in certain situations. And I know in past councils, you know, this has been tiptoed around because some of these houses are across the street from our own personal house, or they are down the road, or they're next door. And the way I look at that is, we go back to that neighborly maintaining community. If your neighbor across the street has a leaky roof, go help them fix it if you have the ability to do so. You know, and anyway, I just, that, that's why, you know, when I think about, we have to be careful. We don't want to step on daddy's toes, but at the same time, let's come up with a solution for those folks. Because so often, they don't even know what to do.
Well, I wonder if we even have the authority. Don't we, we need some kind of code enforcement officer that's, that has some kind of authority to go?
If we do not have, if we do not have an, uh, a specific person, we don't have to. We have, we, it falls back on our police chief or our police department. If we do not have someone that is a quote code enforcement officer, that role falls back on Martin Dale Police Department.
Uh, we decide to do that, which of course, that's exactly what we decided to do. But there's really nothing yet in the state code or whatever that, uh, I mean, that's a, that's a decision. You, you made it sound, Lisa, you made it sound like that was a, a natural, uh, progression, and that's really not true. That's only because we've asked them to go do that.
Well, and, and let me, and let me follow with, it's not that, it's not that the Martin Dale Police Department would be the heavy. It's not that they would be the heavy. They would be the one just to deliver or to post the notice or inform. They're not, they're not the heavy with what we've decided in the past.
Well, this, this sounds like it should be an issue in, in a, in a committee.
That's, that's, that's our basis.
So the good news is that, okay, okay.
I, just, just so, because I think this is coming back to properties that may be in disrepair. The, when looking at the general structure, the general law municipality, we can do what is consistent with the general laws of Texas. There, there are already laws on the books that supersede anything that we could do that deal with this issue. That's, if this is not a hyper complex issue now, if we see problems that are specific and unique and we want to do something that supplements state law, that's fine. But the roadmap is already there. Getting back to the point, and Rob, I think this speaks to your, your issue of how do you want to eat the elephant? If we, if we have a real problem, we can allege it, but then we've got to prove it. And the way you prove that is with an engineer and then there's a process to follow. And I think Rob, probably what you were highlighting is there, there's work and expense associated with this that we're not factoring yet. And it can become a bigger problem than we understand if we don't very thoroughly address it.
Agreed.
Right. Which, which is why, I, I'm glad, I'm glad for the discussion because it, it highlights that this is a, a focus that the city wants to have long-term. It's not a, I don't think one city council meeting will fix it. And the fact that we're gonna have to dedicate resources, financial resources to address it, human resources to address it. I think it's, it's perfectly valid to consider this as, as a strategic initiative. And then point of vacant versus, you know, lived-in properties, we could look at other ways that the city could take action to encourage beautification. So through, you know, encourage volunteerism, um, to where, you know, the city will, those who apply for, you know, they paint my house, the, the city will, you know, pay, you know, up to a hundred and fifty dollars in paint so you can repaint your house. And we use volunteers who, who signed up for it to mow the lawns, trim the trees and help paint the house and, you know, make it look a little better, just take that.
And, and Jared, I don't know if, if, I'm sure you are familiar, but, um, you know, the university, the, uh, Texas State University that has the Bobcat Build project, they do exactly that. And, you know, some people have been criticized for using that service. The bottom line is that if in fact you are an individual or a family who needs help, whatever that looks like, and you as an individual call upon or you call for your neighbor, it doesn't matter. The Bobcat Build will go, they make an assessment if in fact that person is eligible to receive some help. It might just be to clean up the yard. It might be to literally paint the house. But point being is that is an absolutely free service that we have at our fingertips that we should be using every single year.
Yeah. Also, it would be a good thing to get the community to come in and do that kind of stuff. Get them involved. Since there is such.
Other, um, comments outside of the public nuisance, you know, so standard buildings? Um, any thoughts on potential events or including events in our, as a strategic initiative?
I think, uh, Rob's idea about, uh, having some kind of, uh, Fourth of July artwork kind of thing would help with community. Something, since that's such a popular event here. I don't know. Involve something that we, that we know is already a success. Of course, I don't know if a lot of people would come at night after being in parade all day, but.
There you go.
I think they do do that. I, I believe, you know, for, for.
Everybody's having a party sometime.
Yeah.
We talked about, about trying to go, uh, do, do one event a quarter, uh, we do the Christmas for downtown lighting at the center on the Fourth of July parade. The civic thing seems to me, um, for a first time effort is pretty positive. So I, that's a good spring one. We need a kind of deep summer one and I, we, if we did that, if we had four of those a year, that's probably all we can stomach for it.
Right.
Without more people to help.
Right. And that's gonna bite off more than we can chew. You're right. Okay.
That's good. And then any thoughts on, this one's more of a low hanging fruit item, um, you know, the light pollution issue and possibly going on ordinance. Is that something that we want to include as a, as a strategic initiative?
I would love to see it. The light at the water company is blinding, but it affects only one house. House, I mean, you know, somebody who is occupied by a city council member, so.
Well, and I agree. I, I agree. I, I definitely think we should do that. And I will say that in our ordinance, we do have some limitations as to how many thousand lumens that lights are supposed to be in the direction that they're supposed to be aimed. That is not anything that's really ever been enforced, even though it is on our books. So I, I think that should be in ordinance and I think that's pretty simple to initiate.
I would like to see it as an ordinance. Agreed.
I'd say, I'd say. See, maybe, you know, maybe we have a stargazing event or something.
Yeah, the Summer on the Stars event. Everybody come to the Martindale Park, lay out their blankets and watch meteor showers.
Love it.
Our stargaze.
That's on, on, on this, on this strategic area.
Okay. All right, what's next?
The next one was economic development and planning. So in this area, people were, they want a vibrant, revitalized downtown that contains
Mm-hmm.
own retail and dining and entertainment options. The variety, they want that variety, retail and dining and entertainment. Not, they don't want to, you know, this is strict ours, for example. Um, we want city government to play an active role in attracting businesses to Martindale, including marketing and recruitment and possible incentives. Expect the city government to ensure land use regulations and development agreements, protect the way of life for community residents, um, while capturing the growth of the region. So that goes back to that balance between economic development, maintaining the community. And then promote, I want to see the city government take steps to promote businesses within the community. What they like is, you know, people like large lot sizes and the older homes that were present within Martindale. However, they also want to see an increase in the affordable housing options within the city. Again, another area where there's a balance there, I, I think for the future of large lot sizes versus affordable housing options. People enjoy the agricultural area of the city. They, they want, some ideas that came out of this were, you know, having agricultural amenities within developments. So an example was used, I think it was in Eglin, um, that, that had a, you know, community farm in addition to the housing project or, uh, maybe not full farm, but maybe a garden or even a flower. I mean, ways to incorporate that character of the city in the developments that are taking place. They like the revitalization of the downtown area to benefit the current residents and not alienate by creating a loud party-like atmosphere. So in, in the survey responses, if you, if you had a chance to read them, you'll have some people saying, ooh, I want to be like green. And you'll have another response that says, I do not want anything resembling green. There's, there's that, that balance there of benefiting current residents and, and, thanks, but also not creating a party-like atmosphere. I think the difference would be, or the concern here is there's a student body of forty thousand, just five miles down the road with nearby river tubers and they get done floating the river and want to come down and then we, I don't know, there's a, you know, a nightlife created. It's kind of like the square in, in San Marcos. And I think that's what people do not, I think that they're open to, you know.
Specialty shops.
But, but.
Specialty shops.
Yeah, specialty shops, locally owned, operating, um, those sort of things.
Mm-hmm.
They don't want, going on the next slide, they don't, what they don't like is they don't like the crowds. They don't like the sprawling growth. You know, that lack character. We've talked on that already. Uh, the concern about pollution and congestion that comes with more cars and traffic, I think that really comes into play as we look, as residents are looking out to moments like Cherryville and the smart terminal and what kind of cross traffic that's going to create on Highway eighty. You know, one of the interesting notes, they don't want high-rise apartments. I'm not sure, sure exactly what that means, but I think it might have to do with a concern about student housing. Martindale becoming a place of student housing. Most of all, they don't want, they do not want, they do not like unchecked, unregulated growth. And interesting again, that balance, that dichotomy, they don't want to increase taxes to accommodate commercial development. So prefer to use private investors or outside grants. So here's, here's, here's the predicament, right? A lot of cities are using incentives, tax incentive businesses.
Like what kind? I mean, it, they don't have to pay as much sales tax or something? Can we do that?
Often it's, it's on their property tax.
Oh, okay, property tax.
Yeah. So they get a, they get property tax abatement, um, depending on the agreement that, that setup or there's, um, but they also, you know, in terms of, you know, they don't want to see increased taxes to improve infrastructure that only serves specific. I think that was kind of the, the sense I got from that, that discussion. Uh, the primary deficiencies, you know, concerned about take, the government, city government has taken or will take a passive approach to economic development and sacrifice the character of town. However, they want us to be active to generate, you know, additional sales tax revenue. Where the perceived strengths are the downtown area and San Marcos River. The weak, the current weakness is we do not capture travelers along Highway eighty for those visiting the city. You know, we had, we had a bunch of people visiting the parks. Like granted during Corona, higher shutdown.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll still have visitors come into some of our store parks. What's a way that we can capture some of that trap to, for local businesses? And the, the opportunity is, you know, we really do have a blank canvas. We, many of the buildings downtown are vacant. Other area for commercial zoning, that land is, is vacant. So we kind of have, we do have an ability to, to attract those, recruit those opportunities.
How can we, you know, uh, encourage people to come here?
Right.
We, we got some really nice, I mean, Carlton has some really nice buildings that they, that should be.
So I, I have.
It attracts some good businesses.
I'd like to chime in. I'm not sure if my connection is good enough for me to be heard. Okay. Um, first of all, I'm gonna say, just Jared and everybody else, thank you for, for putting this study together. And as I'm, as I'm, as I'm hearing the, the results of it, it's making me think, and, and again, like you mentioned, you know, uh, to each of us, what, what is it that really, you know, moves your needle or is, is important to you or you're hearing from your people that, that contact you? Um, when we're talking about economic development, obviously that one hits home for me on, as, as Chair of P and Z and having had conversations with lots and lots of developers and potential investors. And it's almost like all of the things that have been described, and I know that this is all gonna be written up somewhere, um, as in your results. But it's almost like I would like to have, you know, it on a, on a card as a mission statement to remind the current council slash P and Z commission and, and future councils slash P and Z commissions that the things that we're hearing tonight, these are what the community residents want. I feel like in, in the past, and I will, I will acknowledge it has gotten better. However, there is still, is still a mindset of the no growth. And I feel like we have shut down, um, uh, you know, I'll just say handful, um, of, of potential opportunities because of either the location or the nature of the business. And so it's almost like, and, and believe me, I'm, I'm all about, if I want, I, I want, I want my cake and I want to eat it too. So we all do, but at the same time, we can't always do that. So I just want to encourage everyone that, that we need to remember that just because we have an issue with a particular industry, be it, even if it's a mom and pop kind of industry, to, to be more mindful of what the community and what the residents really are looking for so that we are making decisions based on that and not just our personal agendas. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that the takeaway from this is definitely the overwhelming response was that there, they, people want growth. The, the, the concept of no growth or, you know, is, is not true. I think there, there is, will the growth, um, take away from the character of the town or
Mm-hmm.
whose identity of the town. I think that's where, that when we're in those negotiations, um, Lisa, is
Mm-hmm.
making sure that, you know, hey, I have a development I want to do. Hey, here are the priorities within the community. Here's how the community feels about growth. Can we incorporate some of these things that reflect these, you know, these
Right.
wants, needs. And most times we will likely be open to it. I don't, I don't think.
And let me, let me just, let me just throw this in. Yeah, let me just throw this in because it's actually on my plate currently. You know, there are some properties that are for sale, currently for sale, happen to be on the river. Kicker is they've been for sale a, a long time. And some of them have sold. The people who've purchased them have come to the council or to P and Z commission and requested potential projects. And because they're on the river, they've been shut down. Now, the real deal is that we're not the end-all be-all when it comes to what you can and cannot do. If they're on the river and they are in the flood plain and/or the floodway, then FEMA is really the end-all be-all. But what I'm beginning to get a sense of is that, that Martindale doesn't want anyone to do anything on the river. And this is one item that I would like for Kent to sort of click in on. There's a, there's a point where a, a government, you know, be it the city or municipality, if you continue to shut down what might be possible for somebody's property over time, that they can never do anything with their property, that can become a legal issue, I think. Is that correct?
Uh, I mean, if, if, if a property is, the question is, what, what, could something at some point become a taking if we prevent people from doing what it is that they're otherwise eligible, eligible to do because of the zoning? That argument could be made.
Are you talking about to be?
I, I'm not. I'm, I'm actually not. I'm actually talking about, um, and, you know, I'm just taking a risk here by identifying some specifics pieces, but, you know, of, of land where people have wanted to do five or seven or ten or fifteen, um, either RVs or short-term rentals. And if FEMA says they can do it and we over and over and over again say they cannot, then I'm just concerned, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't matter whether I agree with it or not. What matters is that I don't want us as a city to get in any kind of, any kind of hot water over preventing somebody from being able to either. Preventing somebody from being able to either sell their land. Because every time they, every time their potential buyers come to the city, they realize, well, you know what? The last seven people got shut down on this project, so why would I even try? And it's, it's, we're getting, we're getting on the edge of that point. So I just wanna bring that up at this, at this opportunity, and I thank you for letting me do so.
Yeah, that might be something that we look at when we look at all the amenities and. You know, is, is the reason people are saying no, you know, is because they're trying to. Preserve the river from pollution, or is it?
In that particular case, that's not, not true.
Yeah, if it's, if it's a.
In that particular case that, that, that Lisa's talking about, it was a case that that, that area is one dollar a one, and they wanted to put a commercial outfit in there. And, and, oh, I, I don't understand the.
So they wanted.
Yeah, stand, stand here and say, hey, I wanna follow our ordinances and then say, oh, wait a minute, I really wanted to violate that one for these people.
Well, but they would have to apply for a rezoning.
That's true.
And then it becomes up to the, you know, the two-hundred club, as they call it. Um, and also to the council and/or commission. And, and, and you're right, Mayor, you, you are right, there, there's all different kinds of nuances in different industries and such. I just wanted to bring it, bring it to the table, that, that this, this, this is an issue, and, you know, I've actually got people I need to get back with. Over, you know, what can, we've got this property for sale, it's been for sale for X amount of years, and. Every time we have, bring some, we get lots and lots of calls and inquiries. And what can the use be? And it may end up being that there is not a use, I don't know.
The, it's, it's own residential, but you can't put a house on it.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a trap.
It's a, you can put a house on it, but you gotta have a engineering study that proves conclusively that it, that, that it is not gonna impact the flow of the river. And, and I haven't seen one of those, so I don't.
Correct.
Whether they're, I, I had to come up with it, but I can tell you that if, if they brought it to us today, I would go find our engineering guys and say, okay, did, did they do this one? And if I get the answer on both of them saying, yeah, that works, well then there's not a problem with doing that. But nobody's actually come to us and, and said, hey, I just wanna put a house in there. They, they.
Yeah, I'm, you're right, because they know.
Do this and do that. When you say, well, there's the ordinances, and you got another engineering study that, wow, I, you know, I'll go get you that, and then nobody ever shows up.
And if I could just chime in, um, I would like to say that, I just think like, if it was when, within the cities, um. You know, if the city could acquire that land or buy it, you know, and either do something like. Blue Hole or like New Braunfels and, I think, you know, whatever we could, and then that would be city property. Then you would be able to, possibly that would be one that you could either charge to park, charge to go in or whatever. That land would be protected, it would be the city's, it's something that would, you know, be, continue to, to give. And we wouldn't have to deal with that, but that, that's just my idea for that land. I don't know if that's something we could do. That's, that's right next to the, um, city park, right?
Um, I don't know if that's all of what you're talking about.
Well, there's, there's two, there's one on heater, there's one on heater side of the city park. And.
Yeah.
And those are the ones that I get the calls on the most. And then it has to do with, and then, and then here you'll, you know, here's me showing a little bit more of my cards. That, you know, then it has to do with the, the one that's on the right-hand side of the park, which involves Arlene Lane. And on Arlene Lane, we've got. Hmm, demolition by neglect, uh, houses, houses that are not, you know, not, not habitable at all. And so, anyway, I just feel like, I feel like we are not doing. Anything, quite frankly, other than saying, no, 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 no. And so, it's just, I'm looking, I'm looking for support, because I want to, I wanna encourage. The, what I'm calling, and as you've referenced, Jared, you know, the kind of growth, I coined a phrase years and years ago, guided growth. You know, um, to be able to help people understand what kind of growth we really do want, and give them the tools. To be able to do it for the ultimate benefit of the community. And so, whether that be, whether that be obtained by the city, be it through FEMA via, wha- whatever the avenue is. And I'm right with you there, S- Sonia, in regards to, I don't know why the city cannot have some type of kayaking. You know, and something, why are we, we should be using our own natural resource for revenue, I mean, it's, anyway, that's a whole nother conversation.
Right, well, maybe we need to dedicate some of our strategic planning to each meeting, a little bit of time.
Yeah, so we're gonna get to the parks and infrastructure, and one of the, I, one of the items that was identified that is expanding at current parts. That could fit, if we opted that as a strategic initiative, I think land purchases could be part of that.
I think that's a great idea.
Well, can, can we afford it? Can we use our emergency funds for that? That's where our, all our money is.
Now, we would look at what kind of financing options exist, um.
We have no.
Whether we, you know, use commercial financing, uh, or, or take on other debts, and it would, it would likely, it would not be a, a cash buyout.
And what I hear, we can't even get a credit card as a city, our credit is so bad.
I would think that, I don't think that would be a correct, I think we choose to not have a credit card.
I agree with that. We choose.
And I, I think we could get credit if we, if we wanted to, to this point, we hadn't want, we have not wanted to pursue that option.
And quite frankly, that's how. Dan, how do, how do you know?
How do I know?
Yes.
Uh, why are you asking me that?
Cause that's just, I mean, like, why say something like that without, like, if we can't.
That's what I've heard in the past.
Okay.
You know, through previous administrations, I don't know what it's named.
And, and I, and I agree with that, and I will tell you, that is a mentality that like, you know, when you have no credit. So you're a, a, a almost twenty-year-old or eighteen or nineteen-year-old, and if you don't at least get one credit card, you can't build credit to do anything. I feel like that's the trap we have been in as a city for years, based on the mentality of, oh, no, no, we don't wanna have any credit. I mean, the fact, the fact that the city does not have a credit card, that the city administrator or the mayor can pull and pay for a hotel room. Or to order something online, and it has to go through the whole check-writing process, that is archaic, in my opinion.
And yet safe.
What's that?
I said, yet safe.
Well, yeah, well, you know what, you can be safe forever and never grow, and that's why we'll stay.
I don't think the lack of a credit card is causing our broken.
It, it, with credit card, I, I'm sorry you even brought it up, I just thought. Credit.
I'll, no, it's time you understand all this, when I think, I think there was a time back in six, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, that, that we were in a position. And our, uh, uh, ability to, to pay our debts at the time of the matter, or pay our bills at the time of the matter, was, actually put us in a very. Yet, low credit rating, if, if, and probably to the point where we couldn't get one. I think, I understand, hence the, I believe Val was.
I agree, I, I agree with that.
He's a great.
And I, I agree with that, and then also the way that you, the way that you circumvent that, which we've already done, which is how the. The limit for the city administrator's ability to stroke a check per se, used to be three thousand dollars, and we lowered it to a thousand. So, smart and guided credit, if you will, has, has its place as well.
I, I am, um, I guess, you know, Jared and I have talked about this, but I, I am hesitant to go off and, and, and propose. Uh, having the city go in debt to go do things that, that I just don't think we've been. I don't believe our, our staffing and or. City pro- processes and procedures are stable enough to where I would, that, that I think the city would feel comfortable with us doing. Uh, we've been many times where we have. Done things that, that have got us, with terrible problems, i.e. the debt, the controller. I.e. floods that don't, when we don't have emergency funds to, to handle cash flow issues. I agree, those kind of things are not ingrained in our culture right now, I don't believe, and probably aren't gonna be for several more years. Uh, without that, I, I'm hesitant to, to go have the city borrow money.
And, and if I can, if I cannot recant anything that I said, and at the same time wholeheartedly agree with, with what you just said, Mayor. I, I, I would like to do that. And, I mean, I know that sounds crazy, but you, you know, you, you have to start somewhere. You, you, you have to start somewhere, and so, you know, thank goodness we have a city administrator, cause there was a day that we didn't, and we finally started somewhere.
And I think we're building a, a, a. A cultural process of, of, hey, as you go, uh, that doesn't get you there quickly, but it gets you there safely. And, and.
But if everybody's dead at the end of the road, what does it matter? I'm being a little sarcastic.
And when we, when, so one of the, and, um, we'll talk about later, one of the proposals is to develop a supporting capital improvement plan. And those identify financing options and with cost benefits associated with those. I, I know the issue with financing is, is there's a risk there, but then there's also a. You know, a intergenerational or year, annual, year-to-year equity of. You know, people who paid taxes five years ago aren't getting the benefit of the new road that was produced now because we saved up.
Correct.
There's arguments in, in that way, but then there's also, you know, arguments for su- uh, sound financial management, and if those. If that's not in place, and it's not the, you know, the best interest of the city, then there's no reason to rush off and do things, just, just.
And quite frankly, let me throw this one more thing in, I will, I will say that in my, in my, in my opinion of being a resident and. A public servant for as many years as I have, this council and this leadership and staff. In my personal opinion, has the best opportunity to actually make those smart decisions. Take that for whatever it's worth.
So that kind, this'll, go ahead, Son.
I, I was just gonna say, like, even if, you know, we didn't, maybe we could see, like, what kind, like, as a council, what kind of business would we like to see there? If there is already a business that someplace, river town that we like, we could reach out to them, hey, here's a prime opportunity, this is something. We think will work well in our city, and start porting, we can start porting people.
Alright. So, let, let's go on to some, some of these initiatives, I think we're talking about. Part of this is, how do we encourage not saying no to opportunity? And, you know, when we get to infrastructure, how do we pay for it? On the economic development side, one of the initiatives that was proposed was to partner with the Regional Economic Development Organization to market available commercial products. So that would be the Greater San Marcos Economic Development, uh. Great acronym, but that, there is a, there's an organization that exists that helps facilitate, uh, those opportunities, and it's. By saying Greater San Marcos, you can kind of get a sense of where the priority might lie, uh, but however, you know, cities like Wimberly, Lee Willing and Lock are. Are members of this, and it might be something that we can look to, to increase the marketing of commercial opportunities within the city.
And are you talking about, like, a Main Street program?
Not necessarily, so not developing a economic development corporation within the city, I don't think we have the tax base to support our own. But this works as a, almost a regional EDC, economic development. To, to some extent, to, but they also provide, you know, um, retail or, um, real estate listings and, and. You know, if a, somebody, a developer wants to identify, um, areas where they can. And, eh, distribution center, to use an example. They'll help find commercial, area-zoned commercial or properties that are for sale, that might be a good thing, locations. That core, a lot of that work that you already do, Lisa, they just.
Yeah.
The, the next one was update the existing. So while this strategic plan identifies and those priorities to focus in the next five years. Given their comprehensive master plan. Update, that, that plan is used to inform zoning and land use and subdivision regulations. Um, given the developments of the smart terminal and proposed master plan communities like Cherryville on the periphery of our ETJ. Um, we may want, and, and the current zoning map that we have now, that I think. Needs to be updated, especially our use of mixed use on that zoning map and, and how that's being applied. Um, and how, and do we wanna create different. Uh, divisions within commercial use, you know, C one and C two to identify, to align with some of these priorities that were identified in the strategic plan. Process. A lot of those decisions can be informed by going through a comprehensive master plan with a twenty. Book, um, and that might be something, it, it costs resources to do that unless we can find a, a grant to support it, but that might be something that. I think we should consider as a strategic plan is to renew our comprehensiveness.
I, I totally agree, and I'm gonna chime in here and say, you know, um. As, as P, as P and Z in dealing with that zoning and having been available when it got put in the position that it is right now. Yeah, it's been a lot of years and it needs to be redone. It's my recommendation that we make a decision as a council to, we, we, you know, currently we meet on the first Tuesday of every month. To designate the third Tuesday of every month, and that's just an option, um, specifically for that. Uh, be it P and Z, to have something that is set, that is regular. Um, that we all know we're going to be dealing with it, because if we just continue to say, yeah, we need to do that, yeah, we need to do that. And we don't ever set anything down that's consistent and regular, we're gonna be in the exact same place in a year, two years, three years. I'm committed.
I know that a lot of our ordinances refer to the comprehensive master plan as the basis or justification. For, um, some appropriations, and, and I don't know if you know this, I've got your head, but. It, does, does zoning have to reflect, you know, I know there's a, there's a statute on comprehensive plans. Within the government code. And it's very generic, it doesn't place a lot of firm requirements, it's kind of like, hey, you should, and if you did, you should include these areas. I wasn't sure, when we start, start talking zoning, whether that, a up-to-date comprehensive master plan is a requirement in order to have those.
If an up-to-date master plan is, you can only have certain zoning ordinances if you have a master plan.
We would be screwed. Sorry.
Say that again, Kent, you, you said you're.
You, you do, you do not have to have a, a, an overall master plan just to have zoning ordinances. Just to have certain zoning qualifications.
My point, my, that was, that, and that, my point to reiterate, because we actually don't have anything adopted, yet we've been governing under enforceable ordinances. For all these years, that solidifies and proves that.
Okay. But, I was saying, I think, yeah, we can update our zoning maps and zoning ordinances, I know we're taking that on, taking a, a slow look at those. Having a website meeting, I think it's a. Um, but in terms of an initiative, I think. Uh, my recommendation would be to consider that. Other strategic initiatives identified were, identify ways to East Burden's on small. Other strategic initiatives identified were identify ways to East Burden's on small business and improve the commercial environment downtown. Um, these burdens could include the infrastructure development that is required to, you know, not all, my understanding is not all the buildings downtown have air conditioning or restrooms.
Yeah.
And how, how, what, what grants could the city provide to small businesses that commercial environment downtown, knowing that those investments would last be on the current town? You know, those hard, those hard, um, physical-
And that could be certainly something that we could, we could do, you know, just to put in, to connect one of those buildings specifically to the wastewater if it's not already, or, or whatever they, it, it's needed to, even just to waive the permit fees, you know, they still have to go through the permitting process and have it all approved and inspected properly. But that's certainly a way that, without, without giving away the farm or the property tax, um, that we can certainly encourage.
Right. Right. Other items was advertising local businesses. I think that could be in conjunction with, with signage, but then also, um, free food, you know, the cost sponsorships of city events to just kind of help get that name and brand recognition. Um, and other ways to advertise those opportunities and, and even tradespeople who may be small business owners working out of their house. Provide them an opportunity that they're- And then one of the other items that we touched on previously was using land use regulations and development agreements to preserve agricultural heritage in that small town lifestyle. Um, that kind of communal agricultural experience through, you know, community farming and those sort of things within, uh, permits. How those are, how those are laid out and treated. And then expanding the ETJ as much as possible, regulate the development on the periphery of the state. I think we're, from one end to the another, I think we're on the, our ETJ about stretches to the proposed Cherokee site all the way to the smart terminal. Um, are there any other areas or expansion that ETJ might help develop, might help regulate that home in a periphery that way? They don't have big housing development go on, you know, just on their side on 142.
I just thi, I just think we need to be sure and have to stay up to date to make sure that our maps, that our lines are being, um, documented via new maps, which is part of what has helped us in years past. And, um, I'm, I'm assuming that we're staying up with that, with our ETJ.
We have an up-to-date ETJ map now.
Yeah, just as a aside on that, based off of the agreement we had with, uh, San Marcos, we have new ETJ maps that were created by Carola County CAD folks. They're, they're posted in the offices. Well, I haven't looked at that in about a week and a half now to see if it's online. And if the last time they were not dead online, but, uh, I'll go with that to go make sure they get on CAD.
And when you, when you say online, are you talking about on the county site or on the city site?
Uh, the county site.
Okay. It's my, it's my request and recommendation that those kind of maps be available on our city site. I, I can't not even begin to tell you how many people I have sent those maps to directly. Because that, it's, it's open information. It's public information. There's, you don't even have to, you don't not even have to have a request for it. So we should, people should be able to go to our website and look at every map we have.
Okay. I, I agree with you. Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm priority list to make that happen, but, but it's a great idea.
Well, and I think, I think as part of the previous culture, there's been that mentality of if I hold on to the knowledge I have control. And, and I feel like that's, well, I just don't agree with it. So I feel like give people the knowledge that they need and then, you know, talk them through it and make decisions accordingly. Don't hide the information from them.
We're not trying to hide it.
We're not hiding it from that show.
Present company excluded. Let me, let me clarify that. Present company excluded.
We can just put a link to the county.
That works. Yeah, whatever, whatever makes it easy.
But he hasn't got that love, lady.
Yeah. When people, when people, when people want to purchase property or when they want to potentially develop it, so you're looking at residential and/or commercial, the first thing they do is they go to the city's website. They look for rules. They look for, um, uh, applications that they can literally download in print or preferably fill out online and submit, and they look for maps. The million dollar question is, I'm looking at this property ID number 1234567, what zone is it in? Really? You gotta call the city and the city's gotta send me an email and then they gotta call me and say, call this person for me to call and tell them what zone it's in?
Well, we got the zoning updated.
That was an example. That's an example.
But yeah, we still need the ETJ map up there for sure.
Yeah, that, that, that's an example. So, but, but yes. Thank you for entertaining my, me.
Alright, next one. Any other thoughts, um, on economic development planning initiatives? Anything connect with you? Anything you think should be added? Anything you think should be stroke off?
I'm good.
Alright. Um, management and public services. So, what the resident's saying was noticeable, residents want a city that operates efficiently and provides a basic public services. I think that goes for all states. Um, increased public safety through enhanced police presence and enforcement of existing ordinances. That was a major theme within this area. Um, I think a lot, some of that is due to the stray animals and vicious dog issues that we've had in the city recently, but I think it also goes with that just, you know, enhanced presence of patrols. Most things create coverage that they pay on the land. People want the government to make sure it scales city services and growths, while also maintaining low property taxes and generating other sources of revenue. This, this concept of low property tax and get money elsewhere is a major thing. Um, people do, a lot of respondents, you know, I think some of it is due to the attitudes within certain parts of the community that they're not receiving the services they think are commensurate with the level of taxes that they pay. Um, and it's our challenge as city leaders to ensure that we're, we're meeting that or striving to that ideal. There's a desire for political leaders to be engaged with the community. People want to have those, and those personal relationships, those, you know, talks on the street. Catch the news, what's going on, share their, their insights. And people will like, you know, the city council meetings to focus on strategic leadership issues as opposed to niche or singular issues or some old pet projects. Um, you know, I think-
I can say amen.
Yeah. Most of this stuff should, should resonate with all of us as, as things we've either noted or, you know, not just management, public services, but the preceding topics and what's going on next. Should be things that you can identify. Uh, people like that the police controls of the community and the traffic enforcement on Highway 80. And people view the city as safe and they feel comfortable living here. So I think that's, that's a great credit to the, not only our police department, but also the residents within our community and maintaining safe habits. People do not like, and this was touched on earlier, the political infighting, as I said, you know, focused on pet projects, like the city government to focus on executing a vision for the city, which, and we're doing it right now. We're holding a workshop on strategic planning. So there we go. Um, they want the city government to be more responsive and improve communication. You know, that's a, it's a challenge for me, given the number of days in an office. And then also, as we discussed, you know, issues with the website and the zoning maps and the ETC maps are, are other issues. They want to be involved in the strategic decision-making, potential changes. And they want to be, want to ensure that people who may not always be frequently involved in sharing their opinions of public views are still being considered. And I think that's kind of where that comment about, uh, using personal relationship, interpersonal relationships with political leaders and make sure that we're hearing all voices. Um, increasing the police staffing and coverage. We want to see more police staffing and more coverage. And I already touched on the next bullet. And then there's a, there's a perception that, this was brought up in both the surveys and the workshops, that not all neighborhoods are treated equally or that there's somehow, you know, free Martindales. Within Martindale, there's the Butterfly Meadows Hops Ranch area. There's the central downtown area and kind of the periphery extension of that road. And then, uh, there's a third Martindale on the other side of 1979. And I think that's something that we could take on to ensure that different areas of the community are being treated equally and being, and their concerns are being represented in decision-making. Periods of deficiencies, you know, keeping an electric informed of developments, updating city website endorsements, notices, faster and more accurate responses to requests for services and information. Some of that is staffing limitations, some of that is process limitation that we can improve on. Then offer automated basic services such as automatic bill payments for utilities. That, that should be something that we should be able to achieve.
Amen.
And more, um, enforcement of city ordinances. We've touched, we've already touched on that. And that's effective of the kind of things I saw in certain workshops is that enforcement of city ordinances. If we have them, enforce them.
If I, if I may, if I may touch on one thing that I, I think I, I heard you say in reference to, uh, perception in staff? Did you say something about?
Yeah, the, the primary, the perceived primary deficiencies or the responses, highlighted deficiencies or the faster and accurate responses to requests for services or information.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That, I, I did hear what I thought I heard. And I would just like to say this. There are two phrases that in my personal opinion ought not ever come out of the mouth of anyone answering a phone, including me, because I also answer the phone. So I'm talking about myself at the same time. The answer, no, like, no, you just know, or the answer, I don't know.
Lisa, we're losing you.
We're losing you.
What I've said for years, which is, don't tell me what I cannot do. Tell me what I can do. So, I mean, obviously the answer on a case, uh, uh, maybe even a lot of times, might actually be no. But when somebody calls and they're just told no, it, it creates that perception. Or I don't know, like, not my department. That is one of the least, um, customer, I mean, that, that creates a customer experience that is incredibly negative and gives us that perception. So that's, there's my two cents.
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the ways we can address it or, I've addressed it is, we can, city staff is using the term yes, if. It's most of, it doesn't have to be no, yes, if these other things happen. So, an example of development along the rivers.
Right.
You can do development along the river if it complies with the zoning and if you do the engineering studies required to build.
And that's a very involved, that is a very, that is a very evolved type, uh, response. I personally would be happy with no, but you can do X, Y, Z. You know, I mean, what, what you're saying is what is, is like an ultimate goal, but, um, anyway, yeah. No, you know, if the answer is, I don't know, it should be followed with, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm gonna find out and I'm gonna call you back, back, and then actually follow through and do it.
So going on to the, the other weaknesses, strengths, opportunities. We touched on most of the, the strike, you know, residents view the town as a safe place to live. Higher the weakness is, like with enforcement, it's legal ordinances and limited public safety workforce. I think that's, public safety was chosen specifically because there, there's some comments about even the fire department. You know, fire resources such as, you know, fire hydrants. Um, but making sure that public safety workforce is, is available. Opportunities to be responsive to the needs of residences, residents, address existing grievances. One of the things that came up in a workshop was, you know, what are the underlying grievances for some parts of the town? Or where are the streetlights? Who pays for streetlights? And how those are managed? Also, about a little bit in the infrastructure, who gets access to the sewer resources? And how the, um, you know, septic tanks were handled once they were converted over to sewer and how, you know, whether those were filled correctly and those sorts of things. So there's, there's some existing grievances out there that I think would be relatively easy to address. And then we talked about the, the threats of perceived inequality or the lack of services or inefficient management. I think through a strategic plan, that is, you can address that. So when we're looking at initiatives, um, one is establishing long-range budget framework with performance measures to help maintain strong financial stewardship and achieve strategic priorities. That comes back to identifying within our strategic initiatives those outcomes and measures that we're going to use to, to track, um, and to ensure that our financials are achieving something of value. And people aren't left around wondering, where are my tax money? Some things are more visible. You're not going to notice, you know, the three new pumps we just ordered for the apartment lift station. You know, ensuring that there's strong financial stewardship is there and maintain that infrastructure.
And that, and that is certainly something that should be made, um, made public because they sure will notice when they don't work.
Yeah.
So, you know, we should, we should be letting-
Communication is a good point. Yeah, communication is a good point, you know. Are we sharing our successes as much as people notice our failures? You know, that might be something we have to do. Um, balancing the expansion of the police force with other experiences with the expected growth of the city. Perfect world will be able to expand the police force currently, I'm just not, in a very large way, um, without the- You know, improving the convenience and customer experience of city services. Lisa, you touched on it, you know, how we answer the phones, how we interact with customers. Um, you know, how we handle billing and creating automated billing, making that process easier and less burdensome. You know, those things, those are quality of life issues. I know I, for something, oh man, I forgot my bill. And I wish I could just comment on that. For, as, as we had yesterday, you know, complaints about the, uh- inability to do electronic payments without incurring a credit card fee, except, you know, some electronic payments that if we were ACH transfer, then we might not be able to finish.
And especially, especially when we have a fifteen dollar late fee, and when a resident does the next best thing to an auto pay, which would be to do an auto bill pay through the bank, which sends a hard copy or cash check, but then it doesn't go through the mail proper, and they still get up with the, with the fifteen dollars. So, I think that is something that should be pretty high on our to-do list quickly.
Completely agree. Um, expanding community outreach and engagement through multiple media channels, websites, mailers, uh, you know, social media accounts, part of the city doesn't maintain one, that, that, that might be something that we might need more re, resources for that, that can be time-consuming, but something that we can look into. And then also traditional online print news, make sure that our news is, is online with the local papers. Um, and that our developments are equally covered and covered by their readership. Because I know people receive, you know, our San Marcos newspapers. I guess, excuse me.
I will say, I feel like, I feel like I just want to say thank you, and that, that you guys have done, have done, um, a good job, at, at least posting the articles and keeping updated with the COVID situation in regards to what the county is posting and where we stand. I feel like at any given time over the last eight, nine, ten weeks, I've been able to click on our website and I've been able to see at least what was the most updated in our county, so I, I do appreciate that.
Yeah, that's, that's something that we can talk about additionally, you know, like COVID response stuff, but we probably need to update the website again with yesterday's, uh, revised guidance that he, he put in. And then addressing those issues of equity or existing grievances when it comes to public infrastructure, I can't say straight. And I'm developing that conversation or standing with those. Anything else strike a chord, or would I like to be added or removed from this list?
Um, go ahead, Jim.
I was just gonna say, it's good, it's enough to have to deal with for now. I think anything that really needs to be struck, struck out, I don't know, maybe the social media? No, I don't know, we did, I, I'd like to see some kind of social media, but I'm not sure how to implement that.
Probably social media, at least, and this is, this is Rob, and I'm not on it, so I'm certainly no expert in this, but I've heard too many horror stories about, and, and, and seen, uh, people and blinks to the city, the things that we don't, the city has nothing to do with what's coming out of social media.
Right.
Run the risk, something that, that is totally off the wall, and next thing you know, you're, you're answering questions that has nothing to do with it.
Well, I agree, I agree with that, and those exact same things come out at the, at the local convenience store, you know, sitting around having coffee too. Um, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna get into that one, that one's not my issue.
The website, mailers, and, and doing things through the newspapers, we, we could, we've, I think we've done really step forward the last two years.
Agreed.
Yeah, improvement, that kind of stuff, but it can still get better. I'm not using printed news. We have a green opportunity of that, and we just don't have the staffing and the skills to go off and do it right, but.
I agree. I think, I think do, stick with what you have and do it well.
Yeah.
Versus extending. I, I do, I do have one, one, uh, statement that I'd like to make, just basically throwing it for the record or just to put it on the back of the list. I feel like, um, it's come to my awareness that in town, we have, we have infrastructure. But yet, and when I say infrastructure, I mean, reference to our wastewater lines. And in my experience, in, in, in doing P and Z stuff, when people bring subdivision, uh, plaits to the table for us to all look at and review, it's only at that point that we deal with any type of utility easement and truly identifying, which then would be reported with the county, what area of home average property should be designated as an easement. When all of our wastewater lines were put in years back, that particular element of a really important process, I do not believe was done, and if it was, I just don't know about it and I want to know about it. But I feel like, as we talked about roads and improvements in regards to, you know, uh,
Infrastructure.
Yeah, just infrastructure in general. I feel like that needs to be part of the element. I mean, let's don't go through the entire process and leave out something that is going to be a big problem in years to come. Um, and so, so just, I'm just asking for it to be noted that utility easements and, and where streets end and begin, and whether they're private property or they are city property, I don't think we have officially identified and taken whatever proper action needs to be done to, to, to make that, to make that case.
Okay. I catch you there. All right, that's a good segue. Unless there's any more comments on, on this. A good segue to the infrastructure and public amenities. Uh, yes, that's a pot holding, yes, that's a park. That's basically what this is about. Um, fixing the deteriorating roads, improving and maintaining the parks. The library lockability was, was something that technically stood out on that, and the sewer system. Uh, residents consider protecting our natural resources and maintaining the environment to be priorities. We've seen this at city council when the, when the issues of wastewater, um, treatment plants being, being installed near this, near the town, and how the commercial activities on the river might affect the environment. The response is in the surveys and public workshops echoed those concerns and pointed. Maybe the true environment is a, is a top priority. We'd like to see, you know, they, they appreciate the extended parkland, and they like to see more, um, public access to the San Marcos River, expanded access to the river. River itself is probably the most liked feature of the city, number two to the downtown, or number one, and then downtown being number two. Like this, have access to natural areas for walking, exercise, and leisure. We would like to see less, some residents would like to see less restrictions on river activities, just to be. Others are afraid or are concerned about increased littering of water and would want tubing outside of the city. This is one of those where there's a definite conflict with an attitude amongst our respondents to the survey. Um, I guess the takeaway there is that there's not a uniform set view on that issue. I think there, there's nuance and there's diversity of opinion, um, on moving activities. And then it also extends to, you know, alcohol consumption within the outskirts of the city. Near the town. Um, the library, it was, people enjoy the library and would like to see other cultural amenities expanded in the future, and that ties back to the downtown or other similar, you know, arts and arts. It's kind of whole appearances. They do not like, they don't like, they want that to be the city's number one priority. The park system, uh, it's like the walk, the lack of walkable spaces. And this is, this is definitely true. There, I don't think the Hudson, or the Hudson Ranch Butterfly Meadows, I don't know if we'd ever sidewalks anywhere else in the city. And, and, you know, I, I know, when I'm driving in the mornings, there's a gentleman who walks his dog and he has a stick with a red flag in it, and he'll put it out in the street to make sure he doesn't, you know, he's trying to home sidewalk. But, you know, people even, you know, riding bikes or enjoying Northwest River Road for pedestrian uses. It's a danger to them, the lack of walkable spaces. And then, one interesting feature that struck me as, as odd, and I chose to include it, was that residents located downtown are unable to receive packages ordered online because the postal service designated that area as a post office box delivery zone.
Amen!
And UPS cannot deliver or don't recognize those addresses. And so now they don't, they pay for, say, Prime shipping on Amazon, but they don't get the benefit of that expedited shipping service. And that is.
I, I've got so much to say about this, you just tell me one, I can start talking.
Right now.
Right now. So here's, here's my issue.
Make it brief.
I'm gonna make it brief, I'm sorry. Here's my issue. I have lived in Martindale, Texas, for almost twenty-three years, and I have felt hijacked, per se, for the fact that it is the first time in my entire life I've lived somewhere that I don't receive mail service at my house. I grew up with a rural route number. Never ever lived in a downtown area where I can throw a rock literally and hit the post office, but they cannot bring the mail to me. I have inquired about this. So basically, right now, for the record, it costs seventy-five dollars a year for me to have a mailbox that I'm mandated to have if I want to get mail, if I live on the, if I live on the radar. So, point being is that, yes, I agree with everybody that, I have inquired about it, and it's to my understanding that the city actually has the ability to, to deal with this. I don't know how. But this is not just a post office decision. That if, I don't, I don't know how it works, but maybe we should figure it out, but we ought to all be able to have a mailbox. I'm done. How you like that, Jim?
Well, I, I tell you what, whoever has a, a key to this or wants to really go work it, they ought to go work it and come back with how we go do that. When I inquire to the post office, it, the answer is, is the post office decision, and, and we don't have to say it, it doesn't have to say it. So, you go ahead and go, go figure out how we do this, and then I'll help you go do it. But in the meantime, I'm not gonna waste your time on this one.
Okay, fine, I'll take it.
That was shocking to me that they can't even get UPS or FedEx delivery packages to their house.
At some, at some point, you finally can. If you, if you, if you add a loud enough voice with whomever you are ordering from, and there is, there is a way that you, that you can, but until you find that niche, until you get in that groove, it is incredibly frustrating.
Especially in this COVID-nineteen situation.
God bless.
Losing my mind if that was the case.
Yeah.
Though the city offices isn't getting delivered unless you pay extra.
So, that, that pay extra, that the city offices are within the half, half mile range or whatever, but, you know. They say that the post office has a service that says, there's some rule that says that if you're within a half mile of the office, you gotta use a, the air delivery, because you don't need to pay a lot.
I, I have, I have one more thing to add that I have completely forgotten to share that is super, super important, and Jared, please, uh, pencil and paper this because I believe it needs to be on our website. When the COVID situation began, and we all got locked down, one of my frustrations was, okay, nobody delivers out here. What if I want Chinese food from San Marcos, or what if I want this or that? So, there are a couple of agencies out there, DoorDash being one of them, Favour being another. I personally reached out to Favour, and I will, Jared, tonight, after we finish, I will forward these emails to you so you can actually have the documentation of it. I personally reached out to Favour in a city capacity, stating that this was a service that would be very beneficial to this community. It got channeled up about two levels, and within about four or five days, the city of Martindale was added to the service area. The city of Martindale was added to the service area of Favour, the company that will go grocery shopping for you. Go pick up your medication, go do whatever you want. Yes, there's a fee, but we were not in their, we were not in their, uh, delivery area. We were shy by about one point two miles. And as a result of me reaching out, the city of Martindale and part of our ETJ is currently in the Favour area. Jared, I will send you that information, and I apologize for not sending it out prior to.
How is any of this part of the city's infrastructure? I don't understand.
That's a big gun deal, as good as mail, that's working.
Well, it doesn't, you know, the mail isn't part of the city infrastructure, and neither is home delivery, so let's go on to some that we can actually do something about.
Yeah, it's one of those, it's public amenities that, that is outside of the city provision, but it, it seemed from an outsider or new to Martindale, and I've been, been working here for a year, uh, this is the first I heard of it, and I was, I mean, it's one thing to, you know, pick up your mail in a post office box, sure, but the fact that that coding gets loaded into FedEx and UPS and others for the online shipping and would not recognize your address because of it, I would, for express consignment deliveries, that was surprising. So, um, that's why I included it here. Uh, the last item, make city-owned green space available to residents, specifically the green space in the Hudson Ranch area that are possibly everywhere, um, bring that to a park or something like that. The efficiencies, roads, I noticed that, I had mentioned this previously, some, noticed that sewer infrastructure, um, is incomplete and was simply about remedy old sewage tanks as required under previous grants. I have no knowledge of whether that's, uh, true.
It's true. It is true.
So, apparently that's left sinkholes in those areas, which, if we have a requirement for, uh, who that has, has something to be addressed in the future. Uh, respondents noted the lack of biking and hiking trails and sidewalks. Um, they would like permanent restroom facilities within Allen Bates Park and Prairie. And others would like to see, uh, space for use, including stalker fields and other multi-ways. Kind of summed that up, the perceived strengths, weaknesses, parks, the river, strengths, road conditions, weakness. Opportunities to expand the parks and, um, access to the river, and the great dangers, yeah. Failure to improve and maintain these infrastructure could have impacts on future sustainability and some basic infrastructure risks, pandemizing segments, and so. With that, the first initiative recommended by this is create a capital improvement plan to address infrastructure deficiency and finance mechanisms. Uh, support physical expansion of the library, including restroom facilities. Now, that's, that's, the library is not a city, um, organization. I mean, this kind of, it is a public amenity located in our city that could be categorized as such. That could be categorized as such, so that people can, um, believe if you choose to have some grants or revisalation, including the library and facilities, it's something that the city may want to sponsor. Um, convert Hudson Ranch green space to a city park, create hiking and biking trails in areas and establish multi, multi-sport youth athletic field. Those are potential initiatives for infrastructure and public amenities. Anything else? Um, so the roads, I would consider part of that capital improvement. I didn't list it as a specific initiative. We could spell that out separately, you know. I would do it as road maintenance, um, as separate from a capital improvement, but. Any feedback on, on these initiatives? Anything added, subtracted? Anything that would stick with you?
Well, with the, uh, multi-sport youth field, I know like soccer fields, you can use the hotel motel tax for. Uh, but I think you have to have a plan first.
I'm not aware of that. I, I don't, I'm not sure of, I'd have to look into that further if that's the case.
Well, like, uh, information center, soccer field, those kind of things can go to, um, can be used for, um, the, I think the hotel motel tax.
Yeah, that's true. We could, we could include something on here that addresses the use of those taxes as a.
But I think you have to have some kind of a plan first. So we need to look into that or thinking about doing something with that.
Any thoughts on that one, Rob? I know you, you've spent a lot of time looking into that.
Uh, the hotel motel taxes can be used to do some things for convention centers and sporting complexes, but I believe they have to be tied with some kind of either professional or amateur group that, that is, you know, I don't believe you can do it just on your own. I could be wrong there, but I don't believe you just, you don't build a little baseball field for Little League without having it tied with the National Little League.
Association.
Initiative or something like that. Uh, the only other thing I got on this is I do think we need to have, I don't think we have to have a separate infrastructure initiative other than capital improvement plans, but I do think we need to, to itemize those a little bit so that people can understand where roads are. I do believe roads are the number one priority. And that that impacts a lot of the other initiatives that's, um, economic development and beautification and a bunch of other stuff that, that if we did that right, we would, we would make headway in all of those other areas, but.
Agreed.
I think roads is still the number one piece of the pie. The infrastructure issues that you spoke of regarding the, the waste treatment stuff, well, that was all grant-driven stuff, uh, when we put it all in. We have not, that I know of, has not paid any, any new pikes on our own nickel.
I think you're correct.
And, uh, if, if the grants were not handled correctly in the past and somebody didn't take up their, you know, get, get in line and get the septic system removed correctly or, you know, I don't know that the city is obligated to go off and remedy that.
I think the city was supposed to do it and was supposed to implement the removal of those. It's definitely worth looking into. I, I don't say that very emphatically, but.
The last grant for the Skyview area, we did everything, we did all of that and that, that was done, but that was paid for out of grant. And, uh, if there's areas downtown, at least you obviously know of one, was it, where is it located?
What's that?
This septic system that was not removed correctly.
Oh, I'll just be clear, mine.
Why?
I, I didn't, I didn't own the property at the time, so.
Well, it could be that, that, uh, just my familiarity with the grant acting the out of Skyview, that that was paid for by the grant, but those connections were only done to people of, of middle to low income ratings. And therefore there may have been houses and ownership within the city and that, that ended up not qualifying for that. And therefore the homeowners were supposed to do that correctly and it's not, uh, well, that's on the homeowners.
So I agree.
We, we would have to investigate those all the way down to the concrete if we wanted to.
Right. And then, yeah, I, I, I'd be curious. Like I said, you know, I, I know for sure that there is still one on my property and, um, it was never, it was never, um, collapsed or removed. I mean, some effort in some situations where they basically just collapsed them. You know, they didn't take them out. They just collapsed them.
Uh, that, that's the way you decommission them is you, you uncover them, you bust the top and fill it up with a certain kind of specialized dirt and then cover it all up.
Yeah.
That's the, the process. And we did that out on Skyview.
Right.
So that, that, that's where we, we stand on that piece of thing. But I do think that very top bullet needs to have a couple of sub bullets and one of them needs to be road. Roads and it can be, it's not just maintenance. I think that the real answer to fixing our roads is we, we have to rebuild.
Agreed. I think we need to resurrect, I think we need to resurrect the painstaking plan that the council went through. What is it? Four years ago now? In determining which roads were most important and how we wanted to pave them. I think that needs to become a new initiative and the, the, the groundwork is already there.
I agree. I think we need to start.
Make it happen.
No, here it goes. It's real.
Pick one, pick one. And I want to see the, like we decided, I say me, but we decided collectively. We wanted to see the concrete ribbons on the sides of the, you know, asphalt that prevented erosion and what have you. Pick a road. Let's do it.
With bike lanes.
Yeah, well, they're fine. Add it to it, Jim. Go right ahead.
So here, here's an interesting thought. So when we're talking about improving walkability and the town, in a downtown area, uh, many of the streets, downtown streets outside of Main Street are not much more than, in terms of width. Likely if we were to add sidewalks to those streets, redo those streets, it'd have to incur a substantial expense in obtaining right of way. We might, to, to make it all fit, turn those streets into one-way streets. Curious on thoughts like that and whether that's something, sort of decision-making study would be, make a quick capital improvement.
I, I, I think it's important to at least investigate as to what kind of impact we would have to obtain right of way. There are situations where people own property in front of other people's driveways. And some people know it and some people don't. If somebody wants to, you know, jump up in the deal, then they can. And I personally think that has the potential of falling back on the city's responsibility to make sure that the streets that we are quote maintaining, even if it's filling a pothole once a year, that we actually have right of way to that area.
I, I'm not sure what that has to do with doing one way, but I, I.
Well, I just chose, I chose, I chose one of his options instead of one way. I would, I would personally prefer us to see, I would personally prefer to see that we obtain appropriate right of ways to keep the street direction the same as it is, which is two-way everywhere you go. Than to start getting into one-way streets that, I mean, you really want to mess some folks up, let's go there.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure we're at that point.
He asked the question, so that's just, that's my way in.
Yeah.
I, I think that's out of, uh, going to one-way streets seems to be out of step with initial, initial input that you had, which was let's keep, keep the old farming community field around Martindale.
I agree.
One way is a city kind of, big city kind of thing.
Whether, whether we even pave a street or not, we need to, if we're filling a pothole in the street, we need to know that we have right of way as a city to that space. And, and currently there are areas that we do not and we're paving it.
Uh, we might have to go give us some specifics on that.
Uh, I, I would gladly, Mayor, have a, uh, sit down, uh, via Zoom meeting with you and explain everything that I'm referencing and then give you the opportunity to lay it out for the rest.
Okay.
That was, that was an invitation.
I got you. You know, you can just send me an email and tell me what street you're talking about. Maybe I can figure it out, but.
I know, I know, I know. No, I, I really, I really do need to, I, I, that, that was, that is, that is my initiative to, uh, have a visit.
You've been kind of, kind of sensitive to, to making sure rather than, you know, with step.
Anything else on the, any, any other thoughts on infrastructure, public amenity, next steps? None of them. Okay.
Nope, nope.
All right. So now getting into the next steps, um, so the next few weeks, I'm going to try to distill this into a draft document or further review. And we'll, the upcoming city council meetings are getting completed by, you know, first of July and then start working in those initiatives with a future year spend plan. One of the things that we'll touch on probably with next month, sometime next month. All right. We have a large number of initiatives that we want to do. We have a number one priority of roads. How does this all want to fit together? What are those items that we would consider likes to haves, but not feasible at this time? And then we can start paring down that list of initiatives. And so we're all trying to do between now and there is come up with some rough order magnitude estimates associated with the initiatives. We're not creating a strategic plan that has no hope of being, um, implemented. And we're, we're remaining feasible in what we're achieving.
Good.
I, I agree with you that you can come down to, to define the elephant, now which bite are we going to take to start with? I do think that you need some, that we need to come up with some kind of a process that you get unadvised input from, from the council to, to, um, help you prioritize that kind of stuff. I mean, if we go in there trying to spend an hour arguing about twenty-five different initiatives that are, that, that, that all need to be done, we'll, we'll, we'll spend the hour and we will never, we will just end up talking ourselves to death. But we need to go in with, uh, okay, we took all twenty-five and we go to that and these are the ones we think we're going to really go on to work on. So let's, let's talk about those back and get on with it.
Agreed.
I say do one at a time.
Yeah, I mean, to, to, to an extent, right?
You do, you do one, you do one, you talked about three, you do one. And then when that one gets accomplished, the next one comes around, but you always keep multiples on the table so you don't ever lose your momentum.
I see that boom for a long meeting.
Okay, pick, pick two. I mean, narrow it down. I mean, you know, I mean, of course twenty-five is not an option, but you've got to have more than one. I'm sorry.
Let's, let's just take baby steps at first. Let's try getting one, you know?
And so one of, one of the things that we'll probably look at is can we bring in outside consultants to do the heck with us? Um, and what, what kind of estimates would that require, you know, if, um, that require us to perform? So if we get a lot of things done, we don't have a staff even within the city spending time on it to, to do a lot. Just hire it out to consultants. We'll identify those costs and we can, as we look at opportunities to, to reduce less or reduce or incorporate more for reduced cost, then we can prioritize on those things with council meetings.
Got it.
Sounds good.
Yeah. So next steps, develop the plan, um, identify performance measures for those adopted strategic initiatives and establish a performance reporting process along with that. So we would, beautification, if we say, all right, we want to overgrown yards, then we'll come up with a reporting process on, are we achieving the metrics that we established for? And I think those performance measures are a bunch of processes. That's it. Any other questions, comments, feedback, um, as, as like, that you put from tonight and start working on a strategic plan document?
I say go, go, go.
So you're going to come up with a strategic plan document for us?
Yeah. So I'm going to come up with an initial draft that we can review at the next city council meeting, hopefully. And I'm going to start like, like we talked about, take twenty-five, one to N, rack and stack, here's the initiatives, here's associated costs, here are those things that we want to include in our strategic plan. And oh, by the way, change the happy glad on, to happy to glad on page six. Have that type of discussion with future city councilmen and Jim. And, and have a draft ready at July. Ideally, we, we, you know, if we can publish it and have public comments on the draft itself in addition to the surveys we've already had, um, but that's all going to be time dependent.
Okay, that sounds fun. You know, you're going to kind of prioritize and then the city.
Yeah, I'll come up with a recommended priority list and then it can get dusted by city council based on your direction.
Perfect. Um, can you post this, uh, PowerPoint in your, uh, document that you wrote up?
Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up with an email.
Cause this is pretty good. I like it.
Thank you. All right, Rob, I'm going to give you back the floor on the agenda.
Well, that brings us to adjournment. So anybody want to move to adjourn?
I make the motion that we adjourn this meeting at nine oh nine P M.
Dan, you're going to answer second.
I'll second that we adjourn the workshop in city council. Do one at a time.
Oh, we did the other one earlier. We did the other one earlier. This is the workshop adjournment. That's fine. I think we lost, uh, Sunny along the way. Is that her?
Yeah. She's been in and on for, for the last little bit.